...with this, this is what you're recommending, is that correct?
Yes, we think this is a pretty good value for this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, I lied, one more question. Is this the same way that we purchased materials when previous work was done?
Yes, this is the same way Phase One was done.
Okay.
And our, we will be warranting them from the company that we're buying the materials.
Correct, correct.
As long as we're using someone that they approve to put the report on.
Correct.
And this is the company that we're...
And this is a, um, the only bidders that, that were qualified are the ones who are pre-qualified by this manufacturer.
Any other discussion?
Sure.
We have, we do have a motion and...
I...
Do we have a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah. Motion.
You?
Some move.
Roll call please.
Mr. Midlikow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Halazinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassian?
Yes.
Mr. Kandrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxson?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Item number 20, board action to approve personnel, recommendations to green sheets, see attachments.
Some move.
Second. Roll call please.
Mr. Midlikow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Halazinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassian?
Yes.
Mr. Kandrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxson?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 21, board action to approve an agreement with Slam Dunk Sports Marketing.
Some move, second.
Any discussion?
I don't know if Chris, if you want to share some of the good news about this, is this the scoreboard? This is something that the district needs for the football field. And I know the good work of the athletic committee has, um, has, has got this company to look at advertising for the school scoreboard. And it would, if successful, 100% successful, will pay for the cost of this scoreboard. So pass on to the athletic committee.
Right, there's, there's some legwork that would have to be done to accomplish that. Um, but the end is one, we do need a new scoreboard for sure. And two, um, with some luck and some legwork with the company, the marketing company that will go out to, um, solicit the advertisements for the scoreboard. Uh, hopefully the district won't have any costs to this, so it's a win-win.
But important to note that if we, if we, if the company does not get all of the advertisement, there will be some costs, but it still benefit to the district because it's a substantial reduction to what you would call this, right?
Right. Because regardless, we were still looking at getting a new scoreboard. So no matter what the percentage becomes, which I'm sure will be something at our advantage, uh, we still come on top, one way or the other.
And I think it's important to note that we weren't going to get a new scoreboard just for aesthetics. Uh, we can't replace the parts on the scoreboard anymore. So it becomes an issue that we can't, it doesn't function properly. So we were going to have to look into this one way or the other. So this just seemed like it was the, the best way to move forward, to get a new scoreboard.
And also kudos to Charlie Kiss, our athletic director, he, he sought this out, so...
Absolutely. I agree. Roll call please.
Mr. Midlikow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Halazinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassian?
Yes.
Mr. Kandrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxson?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 22, board action to accept the proposal from Certified Photography Services, C.E.S., to provide services for the athletic department for a total of 1,040 hours, $35 an hour, see attachment.
Some move, second.
Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Midlikow?
Yes.
Mrs. Gadsden?
Yes.
Mr. Halazinski?
Yes.
Mrs. Keller?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassian?
Abstain.
Mr. Kandrowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxson?
Yes.
Six eyes, one abstention.
Thank you. So we want to committee reports, please, athletic, uh, Mr. Alazinski.
Yes, Madam President, we did meet on April 11th, myself, Director Cassian, Director Keller yourself, Dr. Skeezus, and Charlie Kiss. Uh, we, we talked about several, identified several things regarding athletics. Uh, more importantly, we also sat with, um, Coach Smith came along. He sat with us for a good while discussing the direction with the football team, which, um, sounds like he has those kids' nose to the stone on everything right now, it's nice to hear. It was a pretty, pretty easy meeting. Uh, also, uh, just want to acknowledge, there was an article in the Post Gazette last week regarding our Lady Tiger softball team. And of course they're, um, they're ranked number one in our section, they're doing really well, but the article was terrific, if you guys haven't seen it yet, so nice article. That's pretty much it.
Thank you, Bill Needham Brown, Mr. Kandrowski, or Mrs. Cassian?
Uh, thank you, Madam President, would you like to, Director Cassian?
Oh, sure, I'd like to, yes, we had a meeting yesterday. Uh, Director Cassian, myself, yeah, it's not you, I'm at all the meetings. Um, Director Keller, and, um, we had a nice tour of the, uh, the softball fields. Um, and it was nice to see a lot of the work that was done out there. They're beautiful fields, if you haven't had a chance to see them, they're beyond what I had expected, and I'm very pleased to see that. Um, also, they, uh, the other items they did were the, uh, they cleaned up the debris from the trough behind White Oak School, um, lubricated all the rooftop units at South Hall and Founders, uh, installed new first base with concrete anchor on Ritchie baseball field. Um, item five was replace the water regulator at the McClure soccer field to allow more pressure. Uh, constructed new upright pole for the new LED scoreboard on the girls' softball field. Repaired the floor and installed a new ceiling tile in room 46 at South Hall. Replaced the main drain valve for the swimming pool. Repaired, uh, main roofed AC unit for administration, replaced control board and zone sensor. Repaired two leaks on Circuit One and Circuit Two, added 77 pounds of refrigerant. And the last item was installed a new LED scoreboard at the girls' softball field. That is all, Madam President, thank you.
Madam President, let me add something to that. Uh, our, you know, Ed Fagan and his crack staff always does a nice job, much to the dismay of Director Halazinski, as noted, there are no changing of light bulbs in history court. Would you seem to make fun of all the time? So I hope you feel like a little better right now. Thank you.
I was waiting for it.
I'll tell you what, those, those softball dugouts are just, they were beyond anything that I, I could have imagined. And, um, I, I said that our girls who are playing there now, when their daughters are playing, those dugouts will still be there, that's how adorable they are. And, and a lot of it was done in-house, and that's, that's the best part. Call for diversity, Mrs. Gadsden?
Madam President, we had our monthly meeting today. Um, there were nine members present. Um, we spent the time today reviewing the results of the faculty diversity surveys. We obtained 240 responses. Um, upon reviewing that information, we discussed areas of concentration as they impact our strategic plan and training implications. Um, we focused on certain areas towards our strategic plan development. There were actually five areas, and we identified subcommittee chairs with regards to those areas. They include parent and community engagement, which is an overall effort to help increase schools to make AYP and to better engage communities. So Mrs. Cassian and myself will be the subcommittee chair for that committee. The second is diversified recruitment and hiring efforts. As, and that includes, um, also educating employees of the district of what the current practices are. And Dr. Gayvare was named committee chair in abstention. Um, the third subcommittee, well, that'll teach him to... The third subcommittee is development of community mentors and leaders and identifying community resources. Uh, Mr. Aaron Johnson and Megan Flanagan are the co-chairs for that one. Uh, the fourth is training and support activities for the recommendations from the survey results. So that will deal with training recommendations, um, with regard to all faculty staff within the district. And Mrs. Keller will lead that committee. And she volunteered Dr. Skeezus in abstention to be her co-chair. Um, the fifth, uh, support is, uh, the faith-based effort to develop a unified approach that includes grassroots efforts as well as identifying all community supports. And Pastor Erling Coleman and Megan Flanagan have agreed to work on those areas. Um, prior to the end of the meeting, we asked that all subcommittee chairs agree to a couple of things. And that includes meeting with their subcommittee and contacting other committee members to participate in the, uh, partici-, uh, the planning or the development of a plan to recommend to the rest of the, the diversity committee when we meet again. And also to commit to, um, attending both the May and June meetings, which are the last two meetings of the school year, so that we will actually have a plan in place so that when we begin the 13, 14 school year, we can begin to act upon it. So our next meeting will be in May, thank you.
Thank you. Education technology grants and outside funding, Mrs. Keller?
Yes, we met on Wednesday, April the 17th, in attendance for Dr. Skeezus, Mrs. Maxson, Mrs. Gadsden, Mrs. Cassian. There's, I have six items to report. First, the Allegheny County Department of Human Services. They did a presentation for us, it was Dr. Collins and Miss Samantha Murphy. We entered into a memorandum of understanding with the Allegheny County Department of Human Services to share data, which will help us implement strategies to enhance child and family well-being and improve the educational outcomes. And there is no cost to the district. Second, foreign language in the elementary school, this is something that is brand new. Um, my committee discussed exploring a plan to have two foreign languages taught in both of our elementary buildings, starting with kindergarten. And Spanish was one of those, uh, languages that were certainly chosen, and the other was possibly Mandarin Chinese. Number three, the small lab learning. Dr. Skeezus and also, um, Dr. Gayvare went, visited Elizabeth Forward. And at the school district, they submitted a report to our committee to, that this lab, which is a small learning lab, would, would be a wonderful match for a case board. It would be located in Founders Hall, and the approximate cost would be $35,000. Item four, freshman orientation. We had 150-plus students in our eighth grade, and their faculty and the principals visit our ninth grade academy. They participated in orientation activities with students, faculty, and also the principals. Hats off to everyone for this very, very valuable day. Number five, senior presentation day, as our board president certainly discussed before. We had 270-plus seniors completed their projects for senior day. This was early in April. The current staff, the retired teachers, and our, some of our board members were the, um, people that reviewed their presentations. It is with great pride that I have to commend all of our seniors for demonstrating their knowledge and their skills in such a very, very excellent way. And last, our kindergarten registration, which you also heard about. We had 103-plus, and the number went much higher today. And this, um, program has been well-received. My thanks to our secretaries, our staff and administration, plus our wonderful parents in the district that have participated in this program, thank you.
Madam President, may I just say to Mrs. Keller, you missed a nuance while you were giving your report, which is there is a student present who will be in one of the elementary schools. And when you mentioned that language was going to be offered, she turned and high-fived her dad.
Yes. There's an, there's an endorsement right there, the best kind of endorsement. Uh, financial affairs, Mr. Midlikow?
Yes, Madam President, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our committee did have a, a financial meeting, and board members, uh, Maxson, uh, Cassian, Keller, and myself and administration were present, it was a, a pretty large meeting. Uh, we did have a financial meeting, and we had a discussion with Anthony Ditka and Alicia Phillips, our bond counsel, about the remainder of the money we will need to borrow for our, for our current projects to date. Uh, we will, we also talked about the current preliminary budget and the need to reduce that budget by our June board meeting. The financial committee and administration will share the information with the rest of the board during next month's meetings. Thank you.
Okay. Legislation and policy, Mrs. Keller?
Yes, we met today, Dr. Skeezus, Mrs. Maxson, and Mrs. Gadsden were in attendance. Uh, there are four items. Number one, we are developing a policy currently about student recognition, especially at our board meetings. Um, number two, uh, we're also developing a policy on school volunteers and those parents and others that come into our buildings to volunteer their time. We are looking at protocol to be established for school district equipment. Uh, this is our, in conjunction with our commercial artwork orders. And, um, that policy will be established very shortly. And last, we are looking at the revision in the dress code for the year 2013, '14 to include, we've been asked to include cargo shorts, and, and also shorts, but they need to, again, be knee-length. And, um, the policy will, will be adjusted to include that.
And yet another endorsement.
You've backed all the meetings. Is that it, Mrs. Keller?
Yes, thank you.
Personnel, Mr. Midlikow?
Um, Madam President, we did have a meeting, and that information is reflected on the green sheets. And the administration and committee did a great job, thank you.
Uh, city schools, um, Dr. Skeezus, would you like to...
Yes, on behalf of Mr. Lopretto, I'd like to give a report. Uh, we had a meeting on, uh, April the 19th. Uh, we had an overview of the, uh, school district safety assessment that was, um, done. And, uh, we will and have shared many of that, um, those items with the board. Um, that assessment is going to be ongoing, and we're going to continue looking at all of the recommendations throughout the district that need to happen, as well as the new building, making sure that they, um, all of the things that were recommended are in our new Twin Rivers, uh, building. We have Mr. Wayne Wade, our director of safety, um, has asked, um, about having a yearly plan that we, he would like to establish for fire drills and lockdowns throughout the entire district that he's going to put in place, it's going to go in conjunction with our crisis safety plan. And he will have that ready to review at our next school safety meeting so that we can have that in place for the 13, 14 school year. Also, uh, we have DARE graduation, it's going to be occurring on Friday, May the 31st, at 9:30 a.m. in our high school stadium, weather permitting. And for those of you that do not know what DARE is, it is a program that we've had for many, many years in which we go through an entire program, discussing with all of the fifth graders throughout the district on all of the safety, um, things that they need to know, um, not just now, but throughout their high school career and even further. Um, and we have Officer Ken Worley from the White Oak Borough, um, doing two lessons per week. And, um, it'll be culminating on that day, May 31st. Um, that's it, we didn't schedule a next meeting.
Uh, schools...
I have no report, Madam President.
Okay, any correspondence? Any new business? Before I ask for adjournments, I'd just like to say that's, make sure that we keep our missing members and their families in our thoughts and prayers. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
A move.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming.